Order. Today is Thursday, May 15, 2014. Clerk, if you call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counsel Cuddy?
Here.
Counsel Resika?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you can remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. We will start out this evening, as always, with a public to be heard. Clerk, please read our rules.
At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder and pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the City Council, city government, or matters of general city concern. All speakers before council will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Please, sir. Poet, either podium, please.
Hi. My name's Marcus Brumberger, and I just recently, last year, opened up a small business called Casey's at the corner of Osborne and Elizabeth Street. At that point, when I opened the business, I applied for a city loan. It was a county-city loan, the city and the county, through the urban development program. In January, that application was turned in.
I'm going to interrupt you, sir, in all respect. In this portion of the meeting, we're not allowed to debate you or...
I don't want to debate. I just want to know...
We can't even answer questions. If you could lay out your question.
I got that. I'm just letting... That's pretty much it, is that. It was turned in in January, and the City Hall here hasn't done anything with it. So, I'm just letting you know that there's a lapse here, and that four or five months for an application for a loan for a small business that's struggling to keep going is... I mean, that's my opinion. I mean, I don't know. I mean, you want business in here, and I want to stay, and I'd like to grow, and that's how I'm going to grow so I can hire people. Right now, I open at 7:00, and I'm there till 8:00, and I'm the sole worker, so... But that's just where I'm at. I understand you can't answer me, but I mean, I didn't know where else to go. I talked to the urban development person that helped me, and she's the one that suggested that I bring it to your attention, so...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
What... Mr. Selby, I know, is making notes. I'm sure himself or a member of staff will be back in touch with you either tomorrow or next week.
To be honest, the reason I haven't said anything is, you know, I'm just a little guy. In one foul swoop, you guys can come and crush me, and I don't need an army of city people running through my place telling me, you know, because I've opened my big mouth. So, I took into chance, and hopefully, I mean, whether I get the loan or not, that's a whole different story, but, you know.
We're going to do everything we can to encourage business. We're going to try to help you. Just give us a little time to work towards that.
Then on that point, the Bombardier, or the big place right down there, in Chicago, they redeveloped a factory just like that, and they turned it into a place that does occuponics. That's where they grow fish and plants using the same, the water system, purifying the water with the plants, feeding the fish, feeding the plants with the fish water. It's turned into a multimillion-dollar business.
Thank you.
That place down there would be really cool for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? If not, we'll close the public-to-be-heard. Move along to the approval of the meeting minutes from May 8, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counsel Resika. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Kerry.
Presentations and proclamations? Okay. I have one, if the clerk doesn't. What I have here, and hopefully you can see it, this is a flag. It was brought back to the States by Sergeant Scott Weller, United States Army. This flag flew over a Ford Observe, FOB warrior in Kirkeke, Iraq. So Sergeant Weller has donated to the city. I already spoke with Mike Talbot. I've asked Mike if we could fly this at Veterans Memorial Park on Veterans Day, and a letter has been sent to Sergeant Weller, excuse me. So, just wanted to make note of that, that this is it, and we thank Sergeant Weller and all of his comrades for their service to our country, so... Anything you have, sir?
I'll sit.
Very good. Public announcements?
Yes, Mayor. Couple announcements tonight. First is the City of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals will have its monthly meeting on Monday, May 19, 2014, at 7:00 PM. The meeting will be held here in council chambers at City Hall, 24th South Street. And then from the Office of State, Senator John D. Francisco. Senator D. Francisco and members of his staff will meet with Cuba County constituents from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Friday, May 23, 2014, for office hours. His office hours will be located at the Chamber of Commerce Building at Two State Street here in downtown Auburn. Constituents are recommended to schedule an appointment in advance by calling his office at number 315-428-7632.
Okay, thank you. City manager's report?
Just one item, Mayor. Technology's a wonderful thing, except when it doesn't work, and we've been challenged all this week with network problems with our computer system, emails, and so forth. And I just want to make sure that the public understands that if your email hasn't been answered, it is hopefully likely that you weren't being ignored, but it's more likely that we just didn't get it or couldn't respond with an outgoing email. What happened Sunday night, a switch, which basically is a checkpoint for all communication going through the city's network failed, had a power failure, and that took over a day to get repaired. And then we've had ups and downs throughout, including almost all day today, with subsequent problems with the things that I don't understand, but were explained to me, locking up virtual server problems and map drive failures and things like that. So, it's up as of this evening, and hopefully we'll stay up for the balance of the week and into the future.
Speaking only from my office, we received many emails in regards to the budget, trash, so forth, and so on. We have not ignored your requests. We just have not been able to read them, even to print them or reply to them. We will in the next week. I will, from my office, everything that I receive, I will acknowledge receiving them, but it's not, we're just not paying attention. We just cannot answer you. As the city manager said, when technology works, it's great. When it doesn't work, it's really bad, so... Is that boss?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you. Seek resolutions?
None, Mayor.
Ordances?
None.
Resolution number 87 of 2014, setting the date of June 5, 2014, for a public hearing concerning the city manager's recommended budget of 2014-15. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counsel McCormick.
Council Resolution Number 87 of 2014, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that it does hereby authorize that a public hearing be held before the City Council of the City of Auburn on the 5th day of June 2014 at 6:00 PM at Council Chambers, first floor, Memorial City Hall, Auburn, New York, concerning the city manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2014 and 2015. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise this resolution in the official newspaper of the City of Auburn in accordance with the governing state and local requirements.
Thank you. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye, Kerry. Council Resolution Number 89 of 2014, authorizing permission to advertise for bids for the 2014 road improvement program.
Skip 88.
My script calls for 89, so...
Yeah. I'm not sure why 88's been skipped, but I'll check on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, counsel, I can explain that.
Sure.
That was proposed to be in agreement with the Seward House Museum, and they asked that we delay that so their board has time to look at it.
So 88 will be appearing in the near fu...
Yes.
In the future, okay. Fair enough, counsel?
Yes.
Please continue.
Number 89?
Please. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counsel McCormick.
Council Resolution Number 89 of 2014, whereas on March 1, 2014, the Auburn City Council authorized bond resolution number four of 2014 to fund the 2014 road improvement program. And whereas the 2014 road improvement program involves streets to be improved by asphalt resurfacing, including partial reconstruction, patching, crack sealing, milling the road surfaces, and installing asphalt truing and leveling in top courses. And whereas it is necessary that the Auburn City Council authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for the 2014 road improvement program, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for the 2014 road improvement program.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Aye, Kerry. Council Resolution Number 90, believe I'm on track now, 2014, requesting permission to advertise for bids for the Walnut Street culvert replacement project. Sponsored by Counsel Resika. Anyone else? Counsel McCormick?
Council Resolution Number 90 of 2014, whereas on May 1, 2014, the Auburn City Council awarded bond ordinance number three of 2014, authorizing the issuance of serial bonds to finance the Walnut Street culvert replacement project. And whereas this project is a locally administered federal aid project and is reimbursed 80% by federal funds and 15% reimbursement by New York State Markechelli Funds. And whereas Poply Consulting Engineers is near completion on the design phase, and the project is now entering the bidding phase. And whereas permission is requested that the city manager be authorized to advertise for bids for the Walnut Street culvert replacement project by the Auburn City Council, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for the Walnut Street culvert replacement project, pin number 375-385.
Thank you. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Council Resolution Number 91 of 2014, authorizing permission to advertise for bids for lighting at Falcon Park. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Resika, seconded by Counsel Cuddy.
Council Resolution Number 91 of 2014, whereas the City of Auburn has been awarded a grant from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation in the amount of $412,500 in order to implement various projects, including the rehabilitation of the fields and lighting at Falcon and Casey Parks. And whereas on April 15, 2014, the Auburn City Council authorized Agreement Resolution Number 70, awarding a professional services contract to CNS engineers related to the relamping, cleaning, and reaming of the field lighting at Falcon Park Field. And whereas it is necessary that the Auburn City Council authorize the city manager to advertise bids for the Falcon Park Field lighting project, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the city manager to advertise for bids for the Falcon Park Field lighting project.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Because of a family member, I'm going to... Stay, please.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Kerry.
Appointment Resolution Number 92 of 2014, appointing a member, I believe it should be, to the Cemetery Commission. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Camardo, seconded by... No, second, Counsel Cuddy?
Whereas Section 135 of the Auburn City Code entitled Cemeteries provides for the establishment of a cemetery to include a place dedicated for the burial of the dead and the city owns and maintains sole cemetery in the town of Senate, which is regulated by Chapter 135 of the City Code. And whereas Section 135-12 entitled Cemetery Commission, Paragraph A, states that there shall be a commission consisting of eight individuals to be known as the Cemetery Commission, which shall consist of the city manager, comptroller, director of public works, a member of city council, and one cemetery lot owner residing in the City of Auburn, one cemetery lot owner residing in the town of Senate, one licensed funeral home director regularly conducting a funeral business in the City of Auburn, and one ex officio member at large. And whereas the appointment of members of the Cemetery Commission are recommended by the mayor and approved by council, and currently there is a vacancy due to the fact that the member of the commission serving as a city councilor no longer holds that office, and current Councilor Debbie McCormick is desirous of becoming a member of the commission. And whereas it is necessary that the mayor and rec... that the mayor recommend Debbie McCormick to serve as a member of Cemetery Commission, and it is necessary that the city council approve the appointment, now therefore be it resolved that Debbie McCormick, city councilor, shall hereby be recommended for appointment as a member of the Cemetery Commission, and the Auburn City Council does approve said appointment, which shall begin immediately upon the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
I should be. Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Kerry.
Thought you were going to back out for a minute, counsel. A little panic there or something.
People are dying to get in. I was dying to say that.
Dying to be on this.
You're dying to get on this commission, the city manager said, so...
Had to do it.
Council Resolution Number 93 of 2014, requesting permission to advertise for bids for the 2014 CDBG sidewalk program. Sponsored by Counsel Resika, seconded by Counsel Camardo?
Council Resolution Number 93 of 2014, whereas the Community Development Block Grant Sidewalk and Curb Replacement Program is a program in which targeted areas of the city are chosen to receive new sidewalks and/or curbing installation. And whereas the proposed areas for the 2014 construction are entire Auburn Avenue, Dunning Avenue, from Clymer Street to Genesee Street, Clymer Street, North Side only, from South Street to Dunning Ave., Chapman Ave. from Garrow Street to Dunning Ave., and as funding allows, add entire Genesee Place and entire Sherwood Street. And whereas as part of the 2014 CDBG sidewalk and curb replacement program, the city will also review the condition of existing street trees that are adjacent to sidewalks that may be slated for replacement, and trees that are found to be diseased and decline and/or dead will be removed and replaced. Whereas it is necessary that the Auburn City Council grant permission to the city manager to advertise for bids for the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Sidewalk and Curb Replacement Program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby grant authorization to the city manager to advertise for bids for the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Sidewalk and Curb Replacement Program.
Thank you. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Change order Resolution Number 94 of 2014, authorizing change order number one for the Mill Street Power Generation Project. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Resika, seconded by Counsel Camardo.
Change order Resolution Number 94 of 2014, whereas Agreement Resolution Number 47 of 2013 authorized the city to enter into an agreement with Siemens Industry Incorporated as an energy performance contractor to assist with the redevelopment of hydroelectric facilities along the Owasco River and implementation of energy efficiency measures at the water filtration plant and water distribution system. And whereas the Mill Street Dam Power Generation Project has required an increase in the contract price of $66,080 for additional work outside of the scope of the original contract. And whereas the original contract amount was $3,809,875, and together with the change order, the total contract would be $3,875,955, all within the bonding limit of that project. Attached to the memorandum is an itemization of the additional work. And whereas it is necessary that the Auburn City Council approve change order number one in order to compensate Siemens Industry Incorporated for the additional work performed for this project, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve change order number one for Siemens Industry Incorporated in connection with the Energy Performance Project at the Mill Street Power Generation Facility in the amount of $66,080 to be charged to account number ED 829-2440GY.
Does there resemble anything to add to that? And I know Mr. Lupien is here. If counsel so desires, so... Counsel, questions for Mr. Lupien? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Kerry.
Mr. Rossi, would it be appropriate this time to request an executive session?
Certain. Yes, you can at any time.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session in regards to a contractual matter. Looking for a second. Second by Counsel McCormick.
Motion for executive session for contract negotiations. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Kerry, 621.
We'll be in recess for executive session. Move along to Agreement Resolution Number 95, approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Auburn, the Auburn Professional Firefighters Local 1446. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel McCormick, seconded by Counsel Cuddy.
Agreement Resolution Number 95 of 2014, whereas the City of Auburn has engaged in extensive negotiations with the union representing the Auburn Professional Firefighters Local 1446. And whereas the most current collective bargaining agreement expired on June 30, 2013, and negotiations have been ongoing since that time with judicial intervention and with continuing negotiations between the parties. And whereas the City of Auburn and the Auburn Professional Firefighters Local 1446, IAFF, AFL-CIO, have now been able to resolve outstanding issues which have been part of the negotiations, and the parties have come to an agreement for a new collective bargaining agreement which sets forth all of the terms, conditions, and obligations of the parties. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council has reviewed the terms of a new collective bargaining agreement between the City of Auburn Professional Firefighters Local 1446, IAFF, AFL-CIO, and does approve those terms and authorizes the mayor, city manager, corporation council, and comptroller to sign the agreement.
Counsel Camardo?
Mayor, this contract that we've been negotiating with for quite a long time now has some good concessions in it that I think it's come a long way since where we started. Unfortunately, the majority of council last year approved a budget with reductions in the fire department and personnel, which unfortunately was litigated and cost the city in excess of $500,000 or almost $500,000. I think this is a step in the right direction, where we're asking our unions for concessions. We've gotten some good concessions for this contract. I think we're going to have minimum staffing where we can still provide services to the community, fire services to the community, in able to, in an affordable position. I think that our entry level, new hires will be at a lower rate, something that'll show us some savings, so in all, it's a good step in the right direction, something I hope we can work with, with all of our unions in the near future, because we have to start looking at our, that we have a spending problem here in the city, controlling our expenses and trying to get our unions to help out, our personnel to help out, so that we can still provide the services that the taxpayers deserve and expect. So, I will be supporting this. I think it's come a long way. I think all the individuals involved in it, and I think it's going to be good for the city, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Before we comment further, could, we have the city manager give us, give the public, anyway, kind of the details of what, if anything, if we could, or the, can we do that?
Just the highlights? Some of the highlights?
The highlights.
Okay. Happy to. As was mentioned, it was a long, difficult negotiation, intense at times and difficult, but I think the union and our team were respectful of each other and came a long ways in that period of time. The contract itself is a four-year contract. It's retroactive to July 1, 2013, when the previous contract expired. It includes cost of living adjustments of 0, 0, 1, and 2%. It has a total department staffing reduction of six from what the department was a year and a half ago. The minimum manning was reduced from 14 per shift to 12 per shift. New entry-level wage was set. It's, that entry-level wage is $32,000. A year of the previous contract was $40,000 a year, so we'll see. As new firefighters come in, they'll start at a much, much lower salary. In addition to that, the, there's a new wage schedule that slows the rate of growth of wages for incoming firefighters, so that instead of reaching the top of the range in five years, it will take nine years. The top step was added in the grade scale of $2,000 on the base. There is an incentive for retirement, so when employee becomes eligible for retirement, there'll be a short window. The idea of the incentive is to create the turnover so that new employees come in on this new wage scale under the new retirement plan, which results in significant savings per new employee. That incentive is $10,000 cash or $12,500 if it's taken as a contribution towards health insurance and paid out over extended period of time. The uniform allowance, which was $1,200 per year of a year, is eliminated by being rolled into the base wage in the coming year's contract. Altogether, we, and there's various other adjustments in the contract. Those are the primary monetary ones. Altogether, we're estimating savings in, going into the next budget year in excess of $300,000. So, I believe, as Counsel Camardo said, we came a long way from where we started, and it's a good contract in the right direction, and I will add that the bargaining unit is voting this evening. They start voting at 4:00, and I think they wrap up at 8:00, so your vote will be maybe concurrent with some votes being cast by the membership.
Counsel Resika, please.
Yes, this has gone a long way. Am I 100% satisfied with it? No. Again, staffing numbers really don't belong in this type of contract. The other thing that's guaranteed here is, for the life of this contract, that we cannot reduce the numbers even if there's financial hardships. To me, that, that's a little disconcerting. The growth number from, from the step increases over the original five-tier step increase is, increases by about 13%. In the nine years, a starting firefighter, which would average 34,000 for the, for the first year, 32, and then at six months would be bumped to 36. At the end of nine years, their salary essentially doubles to, from roughly $34,000 to $62,000. It's about a 94 and 1/2% increase. Many aspects of this bother me. That growth number bothers me, because this'll set, this anchor in, for future contracts, and it, to me, it's not where I'd like to see this. I'd like to see the growth somewhat contained at the higher end. We went from a top tier of the five, 62,255, to 55, from 55,142. In year two, it goes from, the top tier is 63,780, up from 56,790. In year two, it goes from, the top tier is 63,780, up from 56,796. In, in the following year, it goes from, it goes up to 64,418, from 58,500. And at the end of the contract term, it's 65,706, up from 60,255. These numbers cause me some concern. I'm not 100, like I say, these are, I'm, we've done a long, came a long way incrementally towards the, the goal, and I'm very torn on what to do. Could this be better? Yes. Do we have the time? Well, probably not. Next stages of this would be, most likely would be arbitration. So between the proverbial rock and the hard place here. So I still have to, I'm still trying to decide which way I'm going to go.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here we are at the hour to vote on this current contract. And instead of trying to continue the divisive rhetoric that has plagued this contract for the last year, I would like to, to echo Counselor Camardo and his, and his sentiments regarding that now the Auburn Fire Department can continue to provide excellent service to the public with the knowledge that there have been concessions made to save the taxpayers' money. I would also like to, to state, state that Mr. Selby's concessions, which he outlined, which one of the highlights is the 12-man minimum, the starting salary at 32,000 per year, and the step increase that will, again, save the people of Auburn money. So I just wanted to say, at this time when we're about to vote for the, for, for this contract, that it has been a long, difficult road, but I believe in this contract, and I am going to support.
Counselor McCormick?
Thank you. I think this contract proves what I've believed for over, long over a year. If we have open and honest and respectful dialogue with employees, in this case, our firefighters, will reach an agreement that works for the city as a whole. That means our employees and our firefighters. This agreement will save the city over the course of the contract, depends on who you ask, but it could be between 1.2 million or 1.5 million, being conservative and safe, $1.2 million over the life of the contract. This old method of demonizing employees, demonizing firefighters, has cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees and thousands more in overtime. This is tax dollars, our taxpayers' money that's gone out the window for, for no good reason, no good end result. While I'm concerned that cutting the staffing level from 14 to 12, because I'm not a firefighter and I do believe in standards, and I think that the, the Fire Department or the National Fire Safety, the whole long name it is, recommends 14, I think it says a lot that, that this, it's evidence that the Fire Department, the firefighters are willing to have the open and honest dialogue because we have gone from 14 to 12. They have agreed to that, and they believe, and they're going to, we're going to work together with them to maintain the service level that Auburn has grown to expect even with the reduction in day-to-day staffing. I compliment Chief DeGert in working hard on this, on the numbers and all the things that he's done with this, and helping answer all the questions for new counselors that we came in the middle of the process, and we had to catch up, and we were, at least I'll speak for myself, I needed a lot of tutoring as we went along. But I do think that this is a great contract. I think we should give the men and women of the Fire Department a round of applause. They're taking, they're lowering their pension costs, they're lowering their starting salary for their starting firefighter, we're slowing the growth level, the growth, growth speed of salary levels, so that the city's saving money every step of the way. This contract looks at how we're going to save money. And I think they, after all that's been done, I appreciate what they've done, and I'm in support of this contract.
Negotiations are just that. No one gets everything they want, and no one loses everything they want. This has been a long, long negotiation, probably one of the longest. Without getting into the nitty-gritty or the details of it, the city manager's already covered that, I do want to thank Mr. Selby and Chief DeGert and Laura Wills and everyone on staff to his work from our end, and also for, to Brian Donovan, the president of the Local 1446, and his committee. Everyone worked, it's grown-ups, they worked hard, no one wanted to give up, everyone wanted the best for everyone, and I, and I really feel we've accomplished that. I'm just glad I was not on the committee, had no part in negotiations, and done that once or twice, don't ever want to do it again. Having said that, I would ask the clerk call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
No.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Vocal loss?
None, Mayor.
Table legislation, Financial Resolution Number 83 of 2014, authorizing the creation of a refuse fund, special revenue fund. Do we have a sponsor? No sponsor, that will stay on the table. Financial Resolution Number 84, 2014, authorizing the trash collection fee. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Camardo.
Motion to take Resolution 84 off the table. Counselor McCormick?
Take it off.
What's that?
Did you say take it off the table?
Take it off the table, yeah.
What about 83?
Put it on the table, you mean?
83, there was no sponsor for 83.
You're putting it back on the table, yes.
Did I miss the state then?
It's okay.
We're going to be discussing it. It's coming off.
Yeah, that's all right.
Taking it off the...
Watch the tape.
Table list.
Counselor McCormick?
I, I think, I.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
I'm just voting to just keep it on the table, right? Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
I'm thoroughly confused at this point, Counsel.
So was I.
Now it's, now it's ready to be sponsored and debated.
On which one? 83? 83 is, remains on the table, my friend.
Yeah.
So now we're, a yes vote?
All right, 84.
Right.
Okay.
A yes vote will bring it...
To discussion.
Yes.
And that needs to be sponsored.
We have a sponsor, by Counselor Cuddy, seconded by...
This is the do what now?
To vote on?
To discuss.
To discuss, the 84.
You have to, yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Counselor Camardo, so it's Counselor Cuddy and Camardo to bring this up to the table. All right. Do we need to read it again, Mr. Rossi, or it has been read once?
Whatever the council is...
I think you should read it again.
Resolution 84 of 2014, whereas the refuse fund was established in Resolution 83, and the general fund currently supports the refuse collection fund, and the refuse collection fund provides a discreet service to city residents, and whereas each resident does not pay an equal share for the same service, and the fee estimated to cover expenses is $1,159 per month per unit, and whereas it is necessary to empower the treasurer to waive the fee for any unit which is intentionally unoccupied and produces no refuse for persons who have purchased a landfill pass to remove their own refuse, and sufficient support for the waiving of fees will be required and kept on file, and whereas the method of billing will be included as a line item on water and sewer bills to reduce overall costs of the city. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council establishes a fee of $1,159 per month per unit for curbside refuse collection to be recorded in Fund CL 992130 and billed with water and sewer, exclusive of waivers received effective June 1, 2014. Be it further resolved that the treasurer is empowered to waive the fee for any unit which is intentionally unoccupied and produces no refuse or for persons who have purchased a landfill pass to remove their own refuse.
Counselor Cuddy?
All right, I'm going to try to kill two birds with one stone with, with this. This is part of a budget proposal, but yet it address, it's dealing with Financial Resolution 84, the trash collection fee. First off, I'd like to say, I do believe that we eventually do need to make a trash fund, and I am going to support that. But I, I, I'm not in full agreement of this financial resolution as it is right now. I've received many calls, some in support, but most in disagreement of authorizing the trash collection fee as it is. So what I would like to do is address that with, with a proposal that I'd like Doug and Laura to, to work on. And what I'm, what I'd like to propose is that perhaps we should, in every parcel in the city, there should be one free unit of trash pickup, meaning that whereas the previous, the previous recommendation or the proposal had it at $10.60 per month per unit for the first unit, and then successive units went down 90%, I am proposing that we have one unit free, which, for trash pickup, and then every successive unit after that would have a fee attached to it. And I think that that would address the, the issue of multi-units and the kind of burn in it, it is putting on the, the trash pickup. And I think it would alleviate some of the concerns that, that taxpayers have about, about this, this fee. And what it does is it will, I do agree that we should create the trash fund and allocate the total budget for trash collection into that trash fund, meaning that whatever the general fund will subsidize, this free unit, that should be outlined in, in, in the next budget and, but also that would, then the successive income from the multi-units and from the businesses would also be, would be outlined as well. So, does that make, does that make sense?
Yes, I think so. So a single house with one family in it would not see any difference.
It would not see any difference. In a way, we're, we're kind of keeping things the same for them, although we are allocating the money that is in the general fund into this trash fund. And I would also recommend that whatever, because this is going to be a, regardless, it's going to be a big shift and big change, I would like some of the, the fees, the revenue from these fees, from the multi-unit, be, go towards, you know, enforcement and administration so that the five-bag fee is enforced for both, you know, for both one unit. Again, that's the other thing, is that I would like the, the elements that kind, that address some of the abuses of both, you know, single unit, multi-unit, that, that, that the five-bag fee, five-bag limit is enforced, five, five bags and... Containers, containers is what it was said.
Bags or containers.
Oh, okay. That, that is enforced so that there's no abuse. I would also like to see some of the, you know, making sure that there's no furniture put out there, and I know there is, at least the last time I looked, there was some, some couches out on Genesee Street that I hope to be addressed. But we want to really enforce any kind of abuses on, you know, on our, on our trash pickup. So I guess that's the proposal I'd like to see, I guess, worked out.
Laura was approaching the podium, so I don't know if she had questions or...
Oh, I was just going to clarify that.
Would you, please? Counselor, I don't want to take your time, but I know she had some questions, probably directed at you.
I just wanted to clarify the can versus bag. It's the five, it's a five-can, bag, limit. Yeah. About 32-gallon can.
Got a question?
Counselor McCormick?
So Counselor Cuddy, you're asking to look at that as, instead of the, what we have proposed?
Yes, I think...
Look at an alternative to see what the numbers come out to be and...
Yes, if, really, what I'm interested in is, is, I like the idea, but I think it would stress the taxpayer, you know, I think it's, it's a big leap, and I really would like to see this, you know, I think what I'm proposing addresses the, the single unit versus multi-unit, and, and if it can, instead of going up to four units, maybe go up to six units, and then anything above six, you know, can, they can either stay with the city and pay per unit, or, or, you know, if they qualify for having private service, then that could be an option. But, but I guess this is something I would like to, to see come to fruition as a proposal.
Counselor McCormick?
Oh, I think the way we do it now, right now, today, this week, is unfair, and I think that was our goal, was one to make it more fair, equitable for people, the proposal that the staff put together, where it's one person is paying the same as a person that has five, four, or five units, and we're just kind of subsidizing that. Making a change is going to be difficult no matter what, but I do think that Counselor Cuddy has a, a point, that this is kind of confusing to the public, and they see it as, they don't, don't buy it, let's put it that way. It's not coming across as a win, and in some cases, if you really look into it, it's really, does need some tuning up, I guess. But this might address that, the proposal that Counselor Cuddy is putting forth, so that a person paying their property taxes still gets their service, they're not going to have to pay a fee, but if you have more than the single-family volume for trash, then that would, that will help us pay for the service, help the city pay for the service. And I don't know, it'd be, if we could, if it's, if there would be time to put something together for us to look at, that'd be great.
Counselor Camardo?
Unfortunately, we hear a lot of things about new fees and how we're going to offset the trash pickup. We should be spending time on how we can balance the budget, because right now, the budget is facing a $1.8 million deficit. And by closing the gap of the deficit, the managers introduced revenue streams or taxes, I want to call them, fees to the taxpayers of this community, and I want to go through those. $840,000 is going to be raised in additional fees through trash fees. We're eliminating two police, police positions, which I'm not in favor of, another $200,000. He's recommending $150,000, $144,000 in property taxes. He's introducing $125,000 room tax, and we're borrowing a half a million dollars from the pension fund. So we should be spending time on how we can balance the budget, how we can address the structural deficit that we have in the budget, not by going out and looking at new fees or how we're going to go out and raise fees or taxes, I want to call them all taxes because they are charged to the individual taxpayers of this community. We need to spend time on the budget, how we can address the budget, because if we don't this year, next year, the same problems will be faced in the city, and we cannot go out and keep raising taxes through fees and taxes. And the reason why we're looking at this, or the city's looking at this, because there's a cap, a tax cap initiated by the state in New York, and it doesn't address fees. So another way to go out and tax the community is to tax it through fees. And we should be spending time, to be fair, because I hear that word quite a bit, to be fair to our taxpayers out there, addressing the budget, addressing the structural problems that the budget has, because next year, we'll have the same problem, and it'll continue to happen like it has throughout the numerous years. So I hope that we can spend some time, we did a good job tonight by working with the Fire Department to bring some good concessions to the table that will initially help the taxpayers of this community out, but we need to spend some time addressing the structural problems of our budget.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Resika?
I cannot agree...
I cannot agree anymore with Counselor Camaro. Continually to put Band-Aids of fees to balance the budget in order to stay under the cap by property taxes is kind of a sidestep. Is it true to the intent of the property tax cap, which is meant to provide some relief to the taxpayer? I don't think so, because if you're taking it away from one side and grabbing it on another, to me, it's just leading to essentially the bottom line, which is taking more out of the taxpayers' income levels. We're actually pulling more money out of him by doing this. I think we have to address the structural problems. Again, we're doing it year to year without, I haven't seen any long-term planning yet, and I certainly hope that after this budget, we begin this long-term planning, because this is, by going year to year, basically hand to mouth, is not a solution. There should be processes in place where we can look at how best to provide services, how best to use staff, maybe adjust staffing levels as needed, and look at the size of our government, see what we can do. Obviously, we're looking in with the county to do some levels of consolidation. Great idea, but right now, we're only looking at, I'm going to say, one real, reasonably significant civil service and the municipal powers, authorities, really isn't, I'm going to say, a big stretch here. It doesn't affect bottom lines as much as we should be looking at planning, maybe even some administration duties, personnel duties, legal duties, all these things we need to kind of try to look at and see what makes sense for us to consolidate with the county, and how best to utilize the efforts of consolidation to save the taxpayers' money. Obviously, it would be, if we could save in both the county and the city, it's a win for everyone, not just the city residents, but also the county residents. I mean, the county and the city have a relationship, being the city is the major part of the county. It's in well over 20 percent of the county. So the city, what the city does to save money by consolidation with the county would have a big impact on the county as well. So unless we can develop this symbiotic relationship and make it real meaningful and make some real headway, we're going to be facing some very difficult issues down the road. We still have to make hard decisions here. This budget is going to be requiring some hard decisions. We need to look at virtually all the items that were placed on here. Now we got, the contract is settled here. I think we could look forward to some potential overtime savings, at least that's, at least on the first blush is what we can see. All these things need to be looked at. We need to do a better job of looking at how we do things. And like I said, we need to work towards consolidation, maybe interdepartmental consolidation, maybe we can collapse some departments, combine some departments, even more so, I know there has been some that have been combined, but there may be other opportunities, and we should be looking at these opportunities, we should be exploring what we can do. We got to look at how we can best improve the efficiency, and it's got to be a long-term plan. We can't do it from year to year. We need to have a definitive, long-term, five-year or better plan on how we're going to do this, and what government's going to be in five years, or what we can look to be laying the groundwork for the government for the next 10 years. This is all what is in front of us now, and we need to take the bull by the horns and steer it in that direction. There's just no other way to make this city more substantial and sustainable unless we take action.
Counselor Cuddy.
Okay. Financial Resolution 84 was initially proposed a few weeks ago, and it took me a while to wrap my head around it and listen and get feedback from the public, both from the paper, both from individuals. And instead of not dealing with the problem, which is the fact that the current system does not pay for trash collection, instead of not addressing that problem, which is part of the budget, I want to really work through it. So what I've done is, I've basically taken their proposal and looked at some of my concerns and some of the people's concerns, some of the taxpayers' concerns, and moved that concern off the table. So all of these statements about taxing and fees, and this is with my proposal, which is basically, the first unit is free, will basically exempt, at least on their bill, exempt that one unit for this fee. But what it does do is it brings into the picture that multi-units do produce more trash, and there will be a fee that is according to that. And so it's not going to be a, it's not going to be as much of an onus on the people of Auburn as the initial proposal. But what it will do is it will bring in some revenue so that we can improve this service as time goes on, so that we can enforce it and do it right and modify it. One thing I don't want to do is not do anything about trash pickup, because there have been previous councils from 15, 20 years ago that have put proposals on the table, and yet nothing, no action has been taken. What I would like to do is I would like to get the ball rolling and try to address some of the inequities that have been part of the trash collection service. So I think this is, my proposal is a step in the right direction. I do believe that the proposal as it is puts a lot of onus on the taxpayer, but I think my proposal will address that, at the same time acknowledging the need to do something about trash collection in Auburn.
Counselor Ruzika.
Yes, but by imposing a trash fee on apartment units, you're basically affecting some of the, I'm going to call, more lower-income individuals, where this fee will be simply transferred into their rent payments. You understand that these renters rent for a reason, that they obviously, right now, at the present time, don't have the means to go out and purchase a home. Some of them have rented for a good number of years, some of them may rent for the rest of their life. Those are the ones that are going to be impacted directly. The lower-income people who rent and have to pay an additional rent fee because of the trash program, who is it really helping? I mean, who are you dipping into? You're hitting the lower-income, I'm going to say, the poor residents of this city. And to me, how do you justify impacting some people here who try to work in our community, spend their money in the community, what little they may have after they pay rent, utilities and such, and then take some more out of their pockets for trash fees that would be added right to their rents? I mean, there needs to be some kind of awareness here of who is actually getting impacted here. The landlord is not going to eat it. He's not going to just say, okay, I'll just take this and be a nice guy and not transfer it to the rent payments of the tenants. That's not going to happen. These lower-income individuals will be bearing the full brunt, and it's a tax that's going to penalize the lower incomes. So again, like I say, we need to do something about it, but it needs to be much more well-thought-out and not done at the 11th hour. In fact, I would think that we need to be very cognizant about who gets affected and how they can adapt to it. I mean, if someone, some of these people, look at the articles in the paper about the people that have been in poverty. An extra, even $10 a month is critical to them. So, you know, we got to be careful. We can't turn our back on the residents that really, who live here, contribute to the community, but just don't have the income levels. So we have to be very, very cautious here. In all fairness, I can see both sides of the coin. I mean, we have trash from the units that's essentially a four-unit, it's going to be basically four times the trash roughly. How do we best handle it? That is a very good problem. It's a problem that could probably liken to the same thing with the parking problems that we have. We have a city that was built when there was no cars. Cars were never of consideration back then, so street widths and things like that were set. So parking is going to be one of those problems along with trash pickup until we can kind of figure, get rapper hands around it and figure the best way that this service can be provided without, like I say, penalizing the lower-income individuals. Right now, it's a quandary. It's a very big quandary. How do not, how do you not dip into the lower-income, the people maybe even living in poverty at these apartments, without impacting their quality of their life in a day-to-day basis? This is just one of those things that we really have to understand.
Counselor Cuddy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I wanted to give...
Just a brief, Counselor Ruzika, I really admire your thinking of people that live in apartments and the people that are, I think that all of us have acknowledged there's people on fixed incomes, and there's, you know, no one has extra money to just throw out the window. But when you're talking about multifamily, multi-unit houses or buildings, using the logic that we can't charge that unit for the services the city provides each unit, then we should be giving them a discount on their water. I mean, the renters are paying rent for the apartment that they're renting, which provides them with heat and water and trash pickup. All the services that a city provides a building, a residential building, are paid for by the landlord, and whatever method he uses to charge rent, whatever that is, is the cost of doing business. It's what renters expect to pay, like we pay our mortgage if you own a house, you have to pay your utility bills. No one tells me that I don't have to, I pay less because I did rent long ago, but I still had to have my water turned on. So it's a utility that a business owns or pays for because they own the building. I don't think we can compare or use that as a good example of, you know, we can't charge extra for a four-unit building because it'll hurt the people that live there. They're getting, they're being provided a service.
And I think that my proposal addresses some of the issues with the original proposal by the city. So if the first unit is free, instead of having it, for instance, if it's a two-unit house, then instead of paying $20, or I'm rounding it off to, or $22, then it's going to be only $10 for two units. So basically, the landlord could absorb that much easier than if it was 20, or 30, or 40. So that first unit does address, you know, gives them a little bit more breathing room than if every single unit had the fee attached to it. So what I'm trying to do is soften some, soften the, I guess, the fee so that, you know, it shows that the council's working with the city on a proposal to make it work. And in the meantime, we can come up with something more, you know, that would be more effective. But I do think that we do need to make a step. It may help out in the budget, not as much as if it was for every unit, but my interest is not in helping out the budget. My interest is in addressing a problem, which is the inequality of the current trash fee pickup, and coming up with some kind of compromise to begin to address that. And it's been found by the city that the multi-unit houses are where most of the burden is put on the trash collection. So I think this is going to address that, at the same time raising awareness. And again, we are raising awareness and an issue that hasn't been visited in a couple years. And instead of visiting it, I'd like to act and make something happen. So that's where I stand on this, and I hope to see some kind of, some kind of a refined proposal.
Counselor Camaro.
This is where I think we differ, because the fairness has to happen is when we start to address the budget so that people can afford to live in this community. And I just got to ask you a question, Counselor Cuddy, because these are the numbers that Lauren, our controller, gave us. There's 5,660 single-unit households in this community, and the manager's proposed rate is $128. That's $724,000 that's trying to be raised through this tax fee or this fee. If that doesn't happen, he's got to get it from someplace else, because we still haven't addressed the problems with the budget. So where are you proposing to get it from someplace else? Is there going to be another fee or another tax? Or shouldn't we be spending the time to address the budget so that people can afford to live in this community and are not being taxed with $1.8 million that's proposed in new fees in this year's budget?
Well, I just want to say, after tonight's vote on the fire contract, I would like to revisit the numbers, and I'd like to ask the city, I'd like to ask Mr. Selby to come up with something similar as a step program for the bargaining units that are currently in negotiations now, because I think there can be more savings in current negotiations. But I also want to recalculate with some of the revenue that is lost by my proposal, seeing where the numbers line up once we get the figures in from the fire department and whatever income we would get if it was just the second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth unit, because it may not be $700,000, but it may be $400,000, $300,000, in that range. So I really think there's more time to work with the numbers that are coming in, and I just really, I mean, one of the reasons why I am making this proposal is because of the feedback, and I see the side of the people of Auburn, the taxpayers of Auburn, property owners of Auburn. I see their concerns, and I want to do something about it, but I also do not want to leave this issue alone. So that is why I'm coming up with this.
Counselor Ruzika.
To address Counselor McCormick's issues regarding it. Their utilities, their water bill, those things, their heating bills, those are some things that are within their control. They can set the thermostat, they can use less water, they can turn off their lights. These are things that they can control. However, an elderly woman, let's say, who generates maybe one grocery bag of trash a week will be paying through her rent a larger fee. These are the type of people that you, you know, you're going to hurt. Is the people that are in fixed incomes, maybe live alone, or two people who do not generate a lot of trash, who either rent or, you know, and have to rent, that's our demographic, unfortunately. We have a lot of renters here in the city, older renters, renters who are well beyond the childbearing range ages and that are on fixed incomes. These are the people that are making up our population now. So then the additional policing that's going to be necessary, okay? So now you have to...
What does childbearing have to do with any of that?
Well, because of, what I'm saying, there's no growth. I mean, the kid, people aren't going to basically move out because of...
So it's mostly women?
No, it's couples, right? Two people.
I don't know.
Elderly. If, let's say, you know, if they're in their 60s and they're living together, they're beyond childbearing. beyond childbearing range. They don't have children. They're not generating trash with children, right?
Children generate trash.
Everyone generates trash. Every individual generates a certain volume of trash. It's, it's a normal part of life. So if you got two people or even one person generating a very small amount of trash with a, with a low income in renters, they're going to be hurt the most. So I, I just see that we can do better first off, until we have our backs up against the wall on this, we can do better by looking at other avenues in the budget, looking for other methods of, of fixing our, our holes that will leave these people alone because this is our population. This is who make up a majority of the population of the city. They're voters. So...
They're, they're what, sir? I didn't hear.
Voters.
Voters?
They are voters.
Counselor Cuddy.
Counselor Cuddy, please. The phone calls I've received are from people that live in their homes, elderly, they own the homes and they're concerned about the, the fee. And I believe that, you know, I would hope that, that the, that the landlords would take that into consideration, but they're the landlords, they're the business people that, that rent. And I would say there's many, many, again, not, I think, once you get into anecdotes and it's tough to, it's tough to really kind of get to any clarity. But what this is doing is it's addressing an issue of, of a fee that's, that's geared towards multi-units that all, by and large, produce more trash than single units. So I just, basically my request is to see a proposal come back much more, to me, fairer than Financial Resolution 84.
The way I understand it, Mr., Counselor Zieke?
Yes, I'd just rather see the effort. It's, this, put this aside for now and put the effort to finding other ways of fixing some of the gaps that we currently have and then visit this at a later date. Let's, let's not let this be a distraction now. There's so many issues here and facets to this, this whole thing that need to be ironed out and addressed. And then I would certainly hope that, that the public would come in and weigh in and offer suggestions, maybe emails, whatever, letters, anything that would, that they can think of, that would be input that we could use. But I think we need to really focus on the issue at hand, which is we, without this, you built a budget around this and now there's going to be, without this, which I don't agree with anyhow, with this Resolution 84. Without that, we have to be looking for the revenue that this was going to generate. So I think the effort would be better spent looking that way for now.
Counselor Cuddy.
I would, I would like, I, I agree with, with an aspect of Counselor Zieke's statement. I do think whatever proposal or counter-proposal the city comes up with, I think the, whatever questions may arise, need to have concrete and clearly defined answers. And the public deserves that. And I think that can be done in concurrent with this budget process. But really, it's important that, that the people know that we, the city council is working together to both serve them and come up with solutions that end up creating a much more even budget. But at the same time, it's the city's job to provide clear answers to questions that are going to arise from this. But let, let them know that at least, that the, the one unit is not going to have, they're not going to see the fee. The fee will be, will be generated by the general fund within the trash fund. So that's, but we do need to, we do need to work to clarify answers and I would hope that perhaps there may be some kind of tab on the website or some kind of, some kind of FAQ, frequently asked questions about the trash, about whatever trash fee proposal arises. So, so, but I would like to see more work on my proposal.
I'd like to call the question.
Very well. Counsel, the way I understand this, a yes vote would be to enact the Resolution Number 84 as proposed a few weeks before. A no vote would defeat this, but also leave the door open for a future resolution in regards to Counselor Cuddy's requests and/or others. Mr. Rossi and Mr. Mason, am I correct on my...
That's correct, Your Honor. I mean, this is a vote strictly on the Resolution Number 84. What happens after is a whole new issue.
Okay. All right. Everyone clear on that?
Mm-hmm.
Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Financial Resolution 84 of 2014. Counselor McCormick.
I'm voting no on this specific one, but not on the concept. No.
Counselor Camaro.
No, I would be voting no on any additional fees and up until we get some working done on the budget, try to bring some savings to the taxpayers. So I would not be in favor of any new fees.
Counselor Cuddy.
I'm going to be voting no because I do not think that this resolution is, is where it should be, so no.
Counselor Zieke.
I'm going to be voting no because I feel that we're, we cannot just balance the budget adding fees. We need to look at structural issues. We need to fix structural issues. We need to get everything is efficient and work towards consolidation. So definitely no.
Mayor Quill.
I'm voting no on this particular resolution, not for the theory of it, not for a, a second look or a third look at, at other proposals, but for this particular one, it's not workable in my mind.
Financial Resolution 84 does not carry.
Counsel, under other business, what we have on our agenda, introduction discussion of councilmember proposals for the upcoming budget. I know there has been requests, if we could put this off for a week, which I, I would like to honor, but at the same time, if anyone is prepared this evening to discuss their proposals, I would certainly entertain that at this time.
We're in agreement to extend it one week, correct?
We had agreed. In the main reason basically is the pending firefighter's contract and, and all fairness, but at the same time, if a council had done their work, I want to give them the opportunity to expand on it, so. Very good.
That was, that was my main thing was what we just spent a good amount of time on, so...
Anything else on other business, counsel? Counselor.
Just a question, I don't know if it can be answered. Is there going to be...
No, it's easy. Please, excuse me, counselor.
All right. Let me think. Maybe I'll try to stump the mayor.
That'd be very easy.
Yes. The parks, and I would, if it wasn't such a crazy week, I would have called. Are we hiring like summer people to help make, get the parks ready for the summer and all that? Is it...
I just signed a number of pink sheets to bring on some more seasonal people today.
How timely of my question. That's great because there's a few, some grass that's getting higher and higher. Everything's growing really fast, so I started to get that mentioned, so that I would normally call, but, so that we'll be on television, the grass is going to be mowed soon. Great, that's good news. The other one, this kind of wrapped into this, Pomeroy Park, I had a, a woman tell me that she took some kids to Pomeroy Park and there's, I guess there's playground equipment there and there was like broken cans, like they were purposely, she said, lined up at the bottom of the slide. And I was wondering if there's any, not patrol, but if there's, if, if that's a place where we could take an extra look at it as far as cleanup and I think security maybe. Because I get, they're using that a lot for kids, that's what I was told. And that would be awful if, if a kid went by themselves, she happened to notice it, but, and she said it actually looked like it was put there, not just tossed, so.
Okay.
I had to mention that.
I just had one thing, and Bill, maybe you can come forward. Could you give us some timeline? I've gotten some calls on Franklin Street about the repaving of that street, how it's coming along and when, when it's going to be started?
Contractors just finishing up some of the streets on road program. He's up on Standard Ave in Boston, just put the binder down. And he'll, after that, he's preparing their, getting their, reestablishing their baseline. So I mean, I would expect within the next week, two weeks tops, they'll be out there boxing out. He's starting to mobilize his equipment. We had a meeting today. We didn't set a definite date. We're agreeing upon how we're going to pay him because some of the items weren't in the original contract, so we're using some of the road program prices because that's the same type of work. So yeah, probably within the next two weeks. And again, as I previously mentioned, that, that the, the goal is to have all the work done on Franklin Street by July 30th. And that has not changed.
What wasn't in the contract?
I think it was the July 1st. So we added four weeks, I think.
No, what wasn't in the contract that you got to add to the road program? Did you just say something wasn't?
Um, well, like we didn't have some of the items, like base course asphalt and all the rest. We had, originally, we were going to mill the surface and just put top on. Now we're putting a base binder, top, we're putting fabric down, stone. So some of the payment items that are normally associated with reconstruction weren't included and they weren't included in the quantities that was on the Franklin Street Waterline project, but they were into the road program. So we said, would you extend the road program prices that have already been competitively bid to this project? And that's what we had a meeting today for.
How much is that? How much is, do you have to transfer? How about, how much money would that be?
Um, well, we're, we're planning on using about $150,000 of the road program money on Franklin Street and a lot of that would be for the handicap ramps and the curbing involved and adjusting some of the structures which weren't included in the original one. So the target is around $150,000 of the road program money would go there.
So I can tell people within two weeks they'll start that?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else, counsel?
Counselor McCormick, I'd like to congratulate you. I had the honor of being with you this afternoon at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon where you received, I believe I have it correct, the Community Leadership Award. And you, you gave a nice talk upon your award and congratulations to a great lady. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Request for executive session?
No.
No?
No.
No?
Everybody wants to go home this, tonight.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Counselor Camaro, second by Counselor McCormick, third by Counselor Cuddy. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camaro?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Zieke?
Yes.
Aye. We're adjourned, excuse me.